Well, good evening, everyone. This is Keith with Positively Osceola, another one of our Osceola Matters live shows. And you know, as I've, I say often, we are super blessed, super honored to have the guests that we do have on all of our shows, whether those are AM shows, PM shows, shows that are basking in coffee. So whatever we do, we always are super, super glad that all the busy folks that are in the community in and around Osceola County take the time to speak to us. And again, tonight, we have one of those folks and we are welcoming Mr. Colby Urban, a candidate for seat three in St. Cloud's special election. I'm going to bring him into the show right now. Hey, Colby, how you doing, man?
How you doing? Good to see you.
Good to see you, sir. You see, I see you got the promotional signage running in the back.
Yeah, this is the unofficial campaign headquarters here, so getting the word out.
I tell you, it's, I remember the day, and I'm not trying to date myself, but I do remember the day when elections were that far apart, and they always stay that far apart, but certainly unfortunately with the loss of Chuck Cooper, that opened up the seat for our special election. As you know, we had Mr. Jose Martinez on Monday. Very nice man, did a great job on the show. I know his computer was acting up on us, so had some additional sound effects for the show, but sound effects, but nice guy, and I appreciated him speaking. And I guess I also appreciate you being a guest with us tonight. We'll keep it in a format that was very much like it was on Monday, which is very casual. As I reminded people throughout the week, this is certainly not a debate, as you and I will not be debating each other this evening. But I thought it'd be a great opportunity for you to remind people some of the things that you have said would happen if you were to be victorious on the election night. And so I thought that'd be a great way to give you a shot at reiterating that. And maybe we just remind people that, as we kind of all chuckle a little, there's still a vote to take and to have to take place, and that people have not finished the process yet. So don't want them to think we have. Kind of got a few people popping on. Why don't we make it official? What do you think?
Sounds good.
Alrighty. That opening video really kind of gives you a little sampling of the million and a half things that happened in Osceola County, huh?
Yeah, absolutely.
I can remember the day when we didn't have enough, we wouldn't have enough events to be able to place them in that wall video, so.
Right.
So again, want to welcome Colby Urban, candidate for St. Cloud's City Council, seat three. And as I said, opened up unfortunately with the passing of Mr. Chuck Cooper, very nice man, very active in the community for a very long time. Certainly not a shy guy, certainly spoke his mind for darn sure, and probably part of the reason why a good portion of St. Cloud is missing the man. And so as we move on to do the business of St. Cloud, that seat has to be filled. And yourself certainly, and Mr. Jose Martinez, both came into the primary, did very well. And so now you move on to the special election general. So we're going to move right on and enough of me talking. So why don't you, for those folks who may not know you, may not know enough of you in AFEO, why don't you go ahead and just give us a little bit of of who you are, where you're from, and why you would be a great person to have in seat three at City St. Cloud, please?
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you so much, Keith, for having me on tonight. I love Positively Osceola and everything that you guys do, keeping a positive message here in, here in Osceola County and in St. Cloud. So thank you, everybody, for watching tonight. As you mentioned, it's unfortunate circumstances, the reason we're having this election. Councilman Cooper dedicated his life to the city of St. Cloud and served very honorably. So we have some big shoes to fill whoever wins this seat. Mr. Martinez interviewed the other night. I told him after the primary election that no matter what happens, I believe St. Cloud is in good hands. I believe that between all the candidates, Phil, Jose, Victor, and Daniel Minkler, we had a lot of great candidates and a lot of great people who really truly care about the city of St. Cloud. And I think we should all be honored to have people like that in our city that care about making a difference and making the city a better place. So a little bit about myself, I'm a lifelong resident of St. Cloud, born and raised. As I mentioned, I've lived in St. Cloud since there are more cows than people. So a lot has changed since, since I've been born here, and it's definitely grown for better or worse in St. Cloud. Went to Harmony High School, go Longhorns, and graduated from UCF with a business degree. And I now work for my family business, which is a small business here in St. Cloud. Been serving the citizens of St. Cloud for over 35 years. I'm proud to have had a big part in serving our city and the residents and getting involved here. I serve as chairman of the Economic Development Advisory Committee here in St. Cloud, as well as on the board of St. Cloud Main Street. I love being involved, getting out and meeting residents and people who truly care about making St. Cloud a better place. I just had a newborn baby daughter, she's five months old, and I'm doing this for her. I'm doing this for the residents of St. Cloud so that our city can remain sustainable and beautiful and the city that I know and love and had the opportunity to grow up in, so that my daughter and your kids and future generations can enjoy St. Cloud as well. So I'm excited to run and make a positive difference here in St. Cloud.
Well said, well said. So we're going to keep pushing right through. And you know, I'm a big fan of St. Cloud for sure. And I, my son also went to Harmony, so not wanting all my other friends in the county to get upset, but go Longhorns. So there you go. You have it right there. Just kind of moving right through these, so we can kind of just get as much content as we can share with the community. So we did a little bit of a survey, and as I mentioned to Jose as well, on Monday, we had quite a number of people ask just to have somebody share about the balance between commercial and residential growth. There's, if you, if you go to any one of the restaurants in town, you probably hear somebody in a booth talking about it. And sometimes it's in a challenging manner. So give us your outlook on that. How does the city council address that? What's your feeling on it? And you know, basically, how does that balance move forward? Giving everybody a practical lead in on this. I said this on Monday as well, you know, the secret's out. You know, this is a beautiful place to live. You know, Florida's a wonderful place to be. We're coming up in months where we get to chuckle, and you know, the weather's going to be beautiful. So I mean, people are going to live here, people are going to move here. So how do you manage that, Colby?
Yeah, yeah, like you said, I mean, this is a great place to live. It's obviously an attractive place to move to with the beautiful weather that we have most of the year. What, like I mentioned in the, in the chamber event that we had, we have an imbalance of commercial residential. I think it's somewhere in the ballpark of 80/20. That needs to be a lot closer to 50/50 as far as our commercial residential balance. I want St. Cloud to be not just a bedroom community, but a beautiful place to live, work, and play. And hopefully, we can do that by attracting some higher wage jobs into our area, our region, feeding off of the region that we're in with Lake Nona and Orlando surrounding, and bring those higher wage jobs into St. Cloud. We have some great restaurants, we have some fantastic businesses in the city, but I would love to bring in more commercial growth and help make St. Cloud an economic center place here in central Florida. So that's something that I really think that, that we could improve on it is balancing out our commercial residential balancing.
Yeah, it certainly is challenging. Like I said, you know, we're not going to be able to slow down growth. You hear people all the time, when I say growth, as far as people moving here, I mean, you hear it all the time, whether it be St. Cloud, Kissimmee, the county itself, that's going to be a challenge, no matter who's sitting in at the dais for sure. So you know, if that's going to be you, I wish you the best of luck. That's a certain challenge. You know, I've had, I had the opportunity to speak to most of the council members, and you know, I think everybody has the right, has the right focus on that. That is a focus. And I, you know, I think implementing that, you know, COVID hasn't helped. I think it's been the great distractor and the great detractor for, you know, all organizations, all businesses, all individuals. And that, that goes for the municipal agencies as well. So you know, if it's, if that's in your court at some point, you know, I wish you the best of luck on it. Certainly, it's an important issue. So I'm born and raised here, this may not be too challenging for you. So this seat, you know, if you were to win this seat, you would have the rest of this term, and you'd know probably to the day count, but basically half the term that Chuck would have had. And then, and then you have the opportunity to run two more times for full term, if I'm correct. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. I've always wanted to be involved in, in our local community. And this, I felt like was an opportunity that I could take to get involved and help the people of St. Cloud. And for as long as I can be there, for as long as residents of St. Cloud will allow me to be there, I'll be happy to, to be there helping the residents of St. Cloud. And this is something that I think it's really important to look at our local elections and our local governments, because that's what really affects people's everyday lives. Everybody talks about the presidential elections and national politics, but your local elections are what really affect your day-to-day life. And so those are very important to pay attention to. And it's important to remember to get out and vote for these elections. It's, it's kind of hard in an off year like this, sort of weird circumstances, to remind people that there's actually, actually an election happening. There's no, nobody else on the ballot, there's no president, no senator, nobody else, but there's a city council, a race going on. And we had kind of a low turnout in the primary election. So just a great reminder to get people out and make sure that, that you go vote, either early vote, or send your mail-in ballot in, or go out on Election Day.
Yeah, super important. So how do you, how do you see, okay, so let's say, let's say you win, and you walk into the dais to sit down and shake everybody's hand. So coming in midterm, basically, do you feel confident that you can, you know, hit the ground running and be a part of, you know, that flow? Whether it means you're going to be opposing certain things or in agreement, do you feel you'll be able to function, you know, 100% as you jump into a new thing that's already on the way?
Yeah, absolutely. I've had great productive conversations with every single one of our current city council members. And you know, one of the things that we talked about is we're not always going to agree on every issue. We're not going to agree on, on everything that comes up. But I believe getting along and having that cohesion within the city council, helping make a positive difference for the residents, doing what's right for the residents of St. Cloud is what's important. And as long as we can do that and work together and be respectful of each other and be respectful of our differences of opinions, I believe that we're going to be able to work fantastic together and, and really get some great things done, making a positive difference moving forward.
Great, that's great. So let's go at something that I think will be, will be remiss if we don't tackle this one a little bit. And I'll probably get three or 400 emails if we get away from this one topic. So again, you've, you've lived here your whole life. I have certainly, I've been here for decades with my wife, and we've raised our son here. And we love the beauty of St. Cloud and the surrounding areas, you know, the whole county. But we certainly love, I love both, both the lakefronts, but certainly love the St. Cloud lakefront. It's a, it's a, it's a great, kind of an oasis, you know, it's, it's just got that beautiful feel to it. The last time that they did some work on it, which was a large amount of work with the retention ponds are in the front. So let's talk about the lake, just a bit. You know, how do you feel about the direction it's going? Some of the ideas were well received in the community to this point. I personally think the city has done a good job in opening up the discussion for people to see what's going on, to share what they think. That's, it's probably not been enough for some people personally. As a resident, I believe they've done a very good job of communicating. So what's your take on what you're seeing as the direction we're taking with the lakefront at St. Cloud?
Right. I apologize, it must be my internet that's, that's breaking up, but I believe your question was, what my take was on what's the future plans for the lakefront in St. Cloud. Was that, was that your question?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I, one of the most rewarding parts of being able to campaign here in St. Cloud is getting out, knocking on doors and being able to talk to all the residents and listen to their thoughts and concerns. And I've heard a lot of concerns about the, the future project and the future plans for the lakefront. And I think that the city, I like what they're doing about opening up these, these public workshops and forums so that they can explain the plans and get public input about that. I think we should be listening to the residents of St. Cloud. I like some of what they have proposed for the lakefront, but some of that I think should, they should listen to the residents' opinions a little bit more, where, you know, I understand the concern of the people on Lake Shore dealing with traffic and parking and the, the things that that will bring. But our lakefront is beautiful. It's one of central Florida's hidden gems. And we definitely need to preserve that green space and preserve the beauty, our natural beauty of the St. Cloud lakefront. First and foremost, I'm all for revitalizing and upgrading certain aspects of it. But I think the most important part is getting the public's input, and we should be doing what our citizens want and what's best for the residents of St. Cloud and best for our city.
Well said, for sure. Yeah, I went, you know, I was down at the last, the public, the workshop, and I thought that was presented very well. I did have one, you know, my question basically was, what would be the net increase or net gain in parking? As people continue to move here, and we're already seeing most, most often, it's difficult to park down there. And now, if we're going to enhance that, you know, common sense tells me there's probably going to be additional parking needs. So I think that's something that the public's asking that as well. I'm sure the council's going to be talking about that with staff. And I know the staff's working hard to figure out what that blend is and that balance as well. So, but good to see that they're opening up to the residents, and I love what you said on that. Certainly want to, we want to hear the people, no doubt about that. So here, speaking of that, the other topic that we probably should at least speak a bit about and hear what you're having to say about that is the water. So it's been something that, you know, certainly, I know that years past, the initial action took place or the initial issue began without going through the whole entire thing right now. So I know the staff has been working hard, the council's been working hard, nobody wants to see that problem go on anymore. Everybody wants, everybody to have trust and confidence in their water. Why don't you share a little bit about what your take is on that and what we would do to go to move forward, or as we do move forward?
Yeah, again, I'm so sorry, I didn't hear your full question. My internet's going in and out here, but I believe your question was about the water issue and dealing with that going forward. It's definitely something that I think that the city has finally started to, to move in a very positive direction on it. I've had some very productive meetings with our Public Works Director, Marjorie, and I want to continue to do that as your city council member. I believe that, that we have some great people in place at our city that are very committed to making sure that, that they take care of this issue once and for all, and make sure that it is not an issue. This is not something that I want to be dealing with the year down the road here in St. Cloud. This has to be our number one priority moving forward. And, and I believe it will be. I believe that people in the city truly care about making sure that this is something that is not an issue anymore. I encourage anybody that is having issues to immediately contact the city. And I know they'll send somebody out right away to, to take a look and make sure that they take care of that right away. Clean water is, is a top priority for all of our citizens. We need to make sure that's provided for everybody. That's something that will always be first and foremost, top priority as your city council member. So, so I commend everybody at the city who has worked hard on that and fixing the issue. And, and we need to make sure that we continue to, to move forward so that that's not an issue for, for anybody in the future.
Yeah, and you make a great point that, you know, and the city's been saying this, I know Mary, I'm a batch elder with communications. They've made that point that if you're having a problem, which you did, if you're having a problem, reach out to the city, let them know. That is a huge help to them. They can't guess what everybody's situation is individually, so I know they've been talking about that. I'm going to move on for sure. Here we go. So just a couple other topics real quick, if you can, if I'm breaking up too much, I'm sorry. So what, what do you think the relationship between the three entities we're talking about? City of St. Cloud, City of Kissimmee, and certainly how that works inside and along with the Osceola County? So how do you find, how do you, how do you see that relationship? I know a lot of people think sometimes that they're all separate, but in reality, they're not. There certainly is a connectivity, connectivity between the three entities, specifically in St. Cloud's world, Osceola County. So how do you see that?
Yeah, I think it's very important to have a cohesive relationship between all three of our governments here in Osceola County. I'm proud to be endorsed by District Five County Commissioner Ricky Booth, and I've had many conversations with him about this already. I would love for the city and the county to work closely together so that we can, we can have a cohesive plan with our agreements moving forward, so that we can control our destiny, we can control our growth, we can make sure that we're not growing out of control and the out-of-control developments that we're seeing. And, and I believe Commissioner Booth is very committed to that as well and committed to helping St. Cloud. He's an ally when it comes to controlling our growth. I look forward to working with him in our county moving forward. We need to be working with our county, with our school board members, with the city of Kissimmee, to make sure that St. Cloud is recognized as somebody, a city at the table, and not just the Osceola County as a whole or Kissimmee. St. Cloud, St. Cloud's priorities need to be met when it comes to controlling our growth, controlling our traffic, making sure that, that we're not growing out of control and seeing the, seeing the vast development that we've been experiencing.
Well said. Yeah, I think that relationship is hugely important. They're not three factions, the, you know, I think it's all, it's all important. I have not spoken to one, one of the elected officials, whether that be City of St. Cloud, City of Kissimmee, or Osceola County. I've not spoken to an individual that isn't wanting to work one of the other municipals, so I'm sure that they would agree with you on that. Last topic, kind of an easy one perhaps. So how do you see the St. Cloud being that we are so close to Nona? And eventually will be even closer to Sunbridge. How do you see this all working? I guess I, the way I put it prior would be, it was a concern I had when I was the chairman of St. Cloud's chamber, and a lot of us felt similarly to this, which was if St. Cloud, and this is a little bit of a stretch to catch what I'm saying, but I've always worried that St. Cloud would become kind of a blink and you missed it between Kissimmee and Lake Nona. We're, we're a stopping point if we're not something, if we don't magnify how special St. Cloud is. So how do you see us in that blend as Nona continues to grow and Sunbridge comes into being a reality? How do we not become just, you know, getting gas on the way to Nona?
Yeah, that's a great point. I think St. Cloud has a lot of unique features that really sets us apart from any other city in central Florida. We have a very unique downtown historic district. I'm on the board of St. Cloud Main Street, and I love working with that historic preservation aspect of St. Cloud. I think what the city has done with our downtown district, New York Avenue revitalization, and soon to be the Pennsylvania Avenue, I think it's incredible. We've got a lot of really great restaurants and shops down there that could really drive people to St. Cloud and to see that unique part of it, along with our, our natural features like the lakefront and our world-class parks, natural parks that, that would bring people to St. Cloud. But I believe with the growth of Lake Nona and Sunbridge, we can take that opportunity to, to attract more commercial growth and more higher wage jobs for people to actually work in St. Cloud. A lot of people, including my wife, commute almost an hour outside of St. Cloud to go to work every morning. And if you get off of the Turnpike exit on Kissimmee Park Road, you see the backup every day at 5:00. We want people working right here in St. Cloud, not just living here. We want people working, playing, being attracted to come here and visit St. Cloud instead of going to Lake Nona or some other surrounding city. And I think we can use that as an opportunity.
Yeah, I agree with you. And you know, for years, my wife and I would, you know, I get, as you, I mean, I played, I think, you know, I played saxophone out at SeaWorld I have for 20 years. And so when we're, when I'm not playing in that park, you know, it's family nights, you know, during the holidays, and you try to get out and see what's going on everywhere. And for years, we would, we would drive by New York Avenue on the way out to, say, Celebration, to see the snow coming down, and just to see the lights. And I said, you know, I would just absolutely love to be able to just make a right-hand turn and hang out here in St. Cloud and enjoy that neighborhood that we really want to be in. And you know, everybody leaves the town. It's not like you're never going to leave the town ever. That's weird. But we, we would love that, you know, and I think that those agencies we spoke of, the county, the city, certainly the management within the city staff, and I know, I think Bill Sturgeon did a great job, and all the, all the council members. It is hugely different now. I mean, the monthly market is happening still, I think, right now, and it was packed down there. And people were having a, just a great time. And we asked, we asked a ton of people tonight how they felt about the monthly market downtown, and they absolutely love it. And it's just great to see it coming alive down there. So some of the hoping I had came true. Hey, I want to, I want to have a second real quick here. I'm going to run down. Try to not make it nauseatingly boring, and I'll try not to make a mistake. We're going to put this text in the description text area of this post. But if I'm correct, then you, the supervisor election has already sent out to those who are eligible to vote, the mail-in ballots. So that is already underway. You can mail them in at any time right now. Early voting starts October 30th. That's going to run through November 6th, and that is going to be 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That's going to take place at two locations, Supervisor Elections Office in Kissimmee, on Earl O'Brien Memorial Highway. It's 2509 East Earl O., and then of course, St. Cloud Civic Center at 3001 Seventeenth Street in St. Cloud. Those are both the early voting locations. Again, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00, you can return those mail-in ballots. They do have to be back by the, by November 9th to the Supervisor of Elections Office. No forgiveness on that one. It's got to be in their hands if I'm right. That is, if I'm correct, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And on Election Day, you can drop off at their drop-off box until 7:00. You can also drop off any of the early voting locations also from October 30th through November 6th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00. There will be six polling locations on November 9th. Mail-in ballots at that point, don't be sticking those bad boys in the mail. They ain't going to help. At that point, if you still hold on to a legitimate mail-in ballot, bring it with you to the, one of the six locations, they'll take it from you, you can turn it in and then vote right then. Or bring it, as I said, bring it down to the Supervisor of Elections and get that thing in there by 7:00. But if you're still holding on to it, mail it now. Vote and mail it in. Does it take too long? Only two guys on there. So there you have it. So anything, one last time, anything you want to share that you think maybe you didn't have a chance to share through the campaign?
So again, just as you mentioned, it's really important just to get out and vote and have your voice heard in your local elections. Love to have your vote. I would love to have the opportunity to be able to represent you on our city council. My priorities are public safety. I am honored to be endorsed by the St. Cloud Police and Firefighters Union here in our city, as well as former Sheriff Bob Hansel. Public safety is our most important responsibility, and I do not take that responsibility lightly. That will be my number one priority on the city council. Secondly, controlling our growth. We have to make sure that we are growing responsibly here in St. Cloud so that we can create a sustainable city for generations to come. Clean water is very important. We must provide safe, clean drinking water at a reasonable cost for all of our residents. And higher wage jobs, bringing, bringing higher wage jobs into our city. So all of those are my priorities. I will be honored to be your next city council member and tackle those priorities for you. Please make sure to go out and early vote starting this Saturday at the Civic Center, as Keith mentioned. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me anytime. I'll be happy to, happy to talk with you. And I'm very honored to be able to have this opportunity and speak with everyone tonight on the Positively Osceola, and just appreciate the opportunity for being able to be here. And, uh, just appreciate the opportunity for, for being able to, to be here.
Great job. And, uh, we, again, we're honored to have you here tonight. And, uh, so I'll, real quick, if I can pull this off tech-wise, I'm going to share your website real quick and make sure you, uh, if you get rid of your address, I can find it real quick. And there it is, I believe, maybe? It's hiding on me. Well, why don't you go ahead and give us, uh, give us your, uh, it should be there, what the heck? Uh, go ahead and give your, your web address, so if they have any questions or even Facebook, give it, any questions, they can look that up and, uh, investigate further.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, feel free to go to my, uh, website, it's www.electcolbyurban.com, uh, facebook.com/electcolbyurban. Or if you want to email me directly, it's electcolbyurban@gmail.com. Be happy to answer any questions you have and, uh, um, feel free to, uh, reach out if you have any questions.
Very good, very good. I appreciate you coming on, I know you're a busy guy. And, uh, so it's good to have you on tonight and I wish you and certainly Mr. Martinez, both of you, good luck. And certainly we'll continue to encourage people to remember to get out and vote. Uh, it's a super important election and, you know, you said it really well, which is we focus so much on the national and the state because they command our attention. And, uh, so unfortunately for all of us, sometimes we just get busy and forget that you have such an impact when you're able to vote on a local race, it really matters. You see the effect of that vote, um, so quick. So, uh, encourage along with you to, uh, get people out and vote. We're going to close it off and I'll, uh, I'll hit that little video again so we can see all the folks around to close it up. But again, this is, uh, Keith with Positively Osceola. Thank you, Colby, along with, uh, Colby Urban, candidate for Seat Three, St. Cloud City Council. Together, they're making a positive difference in and around Osceola County.